Seven o'clock.
Yes, it is. The Columbus City Council meeting for January 4th, 2021 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Bulkeley?
Here.
Sorry. Barr?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Kreshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth? Roth? Okay. And Schilling?
Here.
Okay. Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. This is Council President.
Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars proved a perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time, if there's any item on the agenda that anyone in the audience would like to speak toward, we'd ask you to please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. I'd also like to inform the public that Councilman Roth is not able to attend tonight's meeting. He will be on the phone. He's participating in tonight's meeting and will vote. This is allowed by executive order by our governor during the pandemic. So bear with us as we get to some voting because it may take us a minute to make sure we've got Councilman Roth included in our tallies. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the December 21st, 2020 city council meeting. Item 4B, change date of the second meeting in February of 2021 to 7:00 PM, Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, due to Presidents' Day holiday. Item 4C, resolution number R21-01, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4D, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Are you good with Councilman Roth? Okay. Thank you. Move up to reports of city offices.
Item 9A, police department update on the mask ordinance.
Chuck Shear, Chief of Police, was directed by the mayor and council to report to you at each city council meeting regarding our mask ordinance and our efforts to enforce the same. Since the last time I appeared before you, we've only had two additional calls. Of those calls, one individual refused to wear a mask. He refused because he didn't have one. When officers responded, they provided him a mask and then we took away his opportunity not to wear one. So we directed and he complied. The other was regarding a restaurant where their workers were not wearing masks. We went with management, we got their compliance. So those were the only two calls that we've had since the last time I appeared before you.
Any questions for Chief Shear? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Scarlett Johnson to the library board to fill the unexpired term of Stephanie Miller.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to appoint Scarlett Johnson for filling the unexpired term for library board. Scarlett Johnson is a relatively new resident of Columbus and previously has been involved in activities over the years in the community in which she resides, such as the Chamber of Commerce and youth sports associations. Despite having lived in Columbus for only a year, she is involved with CASA, teaching religious education, and she formed the group Columbus Rocks this spring to spread cheer during the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Scarlett uses library services with her family to check out books and attend programs. She is a stay-at-home mom and she has a passion for volunteering and community involvement. She believes the Columbus Library's purpose is to bring knowledge, discovery, and education to people of all ages. She is excited to share her ideas and a desire to bring the community together and help our town grow. Do we have a motion for the mayor's appointment, please?
Yes.
I would move to appoint Scarlett Johnson to the library board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Scarlett Johnson to the library board. Any further discussion? Scarlett, you're in the audience. If you'd like to say anything, you certainly don't need to, but if you'd like to, you're welcome to come forward. You're good?
I'm good.
Signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Scarlett.
Item 13B, request for qualifications for downtown Union Pacific Railroad grade separation evaluation.
Any discussion on, any discussion from the council?
Make a motion first. Do we have to make? We have to make a motion first.
You can make a motion or you can ask if you want to have discussion.
I wondered if you wanted to, do you want to address it or do you want Rick Bogus to address it?
I can certainly address if you want.
Please just tell us what the general.
So since the completion of the 3rd and 12th Avenue vehicular viaducts and the 18th Avenue pedestrian viaduct, those are all open now. And we have had recently complaints about downtown blockages at grade crossings from Union Pacific. So the combination of those two things has really sparked the initiation of looking back at that original plan and determining what the best course of action is for downtown grade separation. We specifically did not list it exactly like it was in that original plan because I think there's lots of feelings and thoughts amongst elected officials and the community about if that plan was the best plan now that we have viaducts in place. So this is really a broad request for qualifications to get the best consultant on board so we can really look at all of our options. Engage NDOT, engage UP, and get those conversations going.
So this would really be the first official step to get somebody on board to help lead us down the way we need to go and guide us.
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question. Are we required? It says master agreement includes a provision of a 23rd Street viaduct and a 25th and 26th pedestrian overpass package.
Those are not finalized.
We're not bound by that?
No.
And then will there be any, and this is probably a little premature with the 23rd Street viaduct, if we can incorporate those ADA ability to get to the ramps that we have all in one package instead of splitting it up into?
That has been brought up a lot and all those possibilities will be on the table.
So I'm, and that's, okay.
I have a question. So is, will one of the options be rather than us building viaducts, that UP would change the way that they do things with their trains as far as stopping or changing tracks?
I'll answer that.
Okay.
No. No.
No.
No. We've, we've made a pretty, a very concerted effort the past few months especially to engage UP and try and improve the blockages downtown. And, you know, at the end of the day, they have a business to run. They were their first federal law kind of favors them in this regard. So our best bet to avoid the inconvenience that blockages cause is to proceed with a study of how we can separate the railroad grade from the UP grade, the vehicular grade, pedestrian grade from the railroad grade, excuse me.
Now saying that, that doesn't mean we can't try to get as much from them as possible financially.
Absolutely.
And that's always a big part of what this whole package becomes is who can participate, who will participate. There's state money, federal money, UP money, and city money.
City money.
So it's a matter of how can we get everybody on board and work together? And, you know, and I think UP recognizes the need for this and it's a matter of where we, you know, where they all come to the table and what they'll come to the table with. I mean, that is a big unknown. But I, I mean, I wasn't trying to be too point blank, but the fact is, as Tara said, they have a business, they run a business to make a profit. This is their main line. This is where all their traffic generates from, so. Okay. Any other questions?
Just to clarify though, this isn't anything set in stone. It's just we're giving staff authorization to just explore possibilities.
We're, you're giving us authorization to put out a request for qualifications. So qualified engineering firms will respond to that request and tell us why they're the most qualified to help us explore the options with how we can separate the grade. Does that make sense? And then all of those options, we're looking to get a lot of public input. What'll obviously be brought to, forward to city council. So lots of work to be done to come, to come to any conclusion and make any final decisions.
And then the way I understood it in the memo was then once a decision is made, the citizens vote. Is that correct on the plan?
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the citizens, and this is a big what if, but what if we present the, select our option and the citizens say no?
Then it doesn't move forward.
Then we keep what we have. We keep what we have and so, so they basically have more power than UP.
The citizens?
Well, just, it's just, it's rhetorical, never mind. I don't need an answer.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I authorize city staff to proceed with a request for qualifications for downtown Union Pacific Railroad grade separation evaluation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, comments from the mayor and city council members.
Do we have comments from council members this evening?
No, I'd like to compliment city staff for snow removal. I think it was outstanding.
Awesome. I, my only comment was going to be similar in saying that we, I had hoped to have had just a general discussion on snow removal because the timing was so good with our major snow just four or five days ago. With the holidays and trying to get something ready to get on the agenda, staff wasn't able to get something really put together to just present. And when I say present, I was looking to just update the public on snow routes, plans for plowing, how do we plow, why do we plow this way? You know, how do, what's the timeframe to remove snow from sidewalks? Those kind of general things that always get brought up at your first snow. And this really was the first snow of any consequence. And I agree, Councilman, that I think they did a great job. And, you know, I'll talk with Mr. Sliva and see if we can't maybe get something presented for our next meeting. They do have, they do have their website updated, Public Works website. If anybody does want to get on and take a look, I mean, it's under street snow plowing, links to snow plowing removal. There's a list of expanded emergency snow routes as well as an interactive map. So I mean, at some point, you can really get excited about watching plows go around town if that's what gets you excited. Otherwise, we'll move on. Resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R21-02, authorizing the city to work with Elkhorn Valley Community Development Corporation, doing business as Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska to submit a grant application to the Rural Workforce Housing Fund for matching grant in an amount up to $1 million and to authorize use of LV840 funds to match up to $750,000, contingent upon the amount of contributions Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska receives, which, when combined with economic development funds, do not surpass the amount granted by the state's Rural Workforce Housing Fund.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R21-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-02. Any discussion?
How do you see this money being used? Who do you think is going to come forward that hasn't already tried to come forward and get 840 money? What would give them the incentive now as opposed to two years ago when we were really hurting for housing?
Well, the Neighbor Works and myself have already been reaching out to developers that we know have housing projects kind of in the pipe. And so we're gathering letters of intent to submit with the grant application, the first round grant application. And there are a number of projects in the pipe. A couple of them are subsequent phases after the first phase two years ago. So there are quite a few projects that that first round of Rural Workforce Housing helped fund their first phase. And now they're ready to move on to phase two. There's still a significant housing need. I know a lot of housing has been built. I just updated for Neighbor Works and for their application. I updated some of the statistics that were in that housing study that was completed back in 2017. And one of the statistics was particularly stood out to me. It was that from 2016 to 2019, Columbus's jobs grew just over 1,000 jobs more and less than 500 new residents. You know, so that puts it in perspective. We aren't, the housing stock is not even keeping up with how well our businesses are doing. And that's, that's in that same time period where we have increased housing production by 400%. You know, so there's still a need and then there's still all that backlog where we were producing 70 to 75 units a year and those jobs were still growing at that same rate. Does that make sense? So there is still a significant demand for more housing in Columbus.
There's still a demand for senior housing, too.
Absolutely.
I know Bonnie Phillips, I know is on their program that they were 70, 70 units short for their, you know, for their group. So, you know, we're in need of that, you know, 7, 8, 900 square foot little bungalow type thing, too. And that's, that's something that I, you know. Now, I know that's something that developers aren't really interested in doing because, you know, there's not that much money in those programs.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I think the biggest problem is affording, affording housing to be affordable in this town for most people, for younger people. I would say it's very hard for them to buy a house in this town. If you're paying for a college loan, paying for a car, and then you're supposed to put money in retirement, it just ain't gonna happen. Thank you.
Well, and we talk a lot about affordable housing, you know. I mean, there is, there's a difference between a new development that gets going and it's the $300,000 to $400,000 houses and, you know, hopefully affordable housing. And, you know, obviously what's happening with inflation all the time, that affordable housing level is always creeping up and up and up. So, but as Tara mentioned, there certainly is a need for more housing. We have made a dent, it's awesome, some of the progress that's been made, but we don't want to quit now.
Right.
And take advantage of some opportunities if, if it's there.
Yeah, if we can double our money for this big of a need, it's a great opportunity.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to adopt. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, ordinance number 21-01, vacating 25th Avenue from the north line of 14th Street to the south line of the alley between 14th and 15th Streets in conjunction with the community building project.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the rules be suspended and ordinance number 21-01 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 21-01 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 21-01.
Mr. Mayor, recommend ordinance number 21-01 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 21-01. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 15B, ordinance number 21-02, amending the pay plan for all classifications by increasing the annual salary, salary of the city administrator to $200,000 for a period beginning December 7th, 2020 and ending with the mayor's term of office, December 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 21-02 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read ordinance number 21-02 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 21-02.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 21-02 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 21-02. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Yay.
Motion passes.
Item 15C, ordinance number 21-03, amending section 92.60 of chapter 92 of Title IX of Columbus City Code regarding the sunset provision for the prevention of COVID-19.
I thought what I'd do is take a moment to introduce this in front of us now and then ask Chuck Seepers with East Central District Health to come forward and explain what has been presented and then go to suspending the rules and having our discussion. I thought that maybe made more sense so we'd all be on the same page and maybe have some better understanding or maybe answer some questions we all have right now. This goes back to right after our last council meeting, December 21st. Immediately after that meeting, there was a discussion held by some of the council members and myself of what could possibly change. There was a discussion that evening of the mask mandate, some, what could possibly change to make it different, make it better? And so one of the, what came out of that was really the feeling for a trigger. Another community had a trigger that had been instrumental or part of their instrument when it was voted in, Papillion. So that was something that we thought was worth looking at. The next day, I did contact Mr. Seaper at, at East Central District and asked him for his input. And that's kind of where we are today. We had, we had the input, we had the holidays, we had input and holidays. And, and so anyone that maybe wanted a little more input, I apologize just because actually we're pretty fortunate getting something together like this in the timeframe we had. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Seepers to come up and give us a little review of what, what he's recommended us putting together for, I call it a trigger. There may be a better word for that. But we'd ask Chuck to please come, give us, give us some information.
All right. And just have a couple of slides here just to kind of help, you know, illustrate. Next slide, yep. And so really want to talk about these two things. So the triggers two parts really, right? So it's, it is the sunset, what, what a new sunset might look like. And then, you know, the, you know, yanking that sunset back, like what, what would the reapplication of that look like? Next slide, please. So currently, as everyone knows, we're just looking at that timeframe, right? So the February 23rd, that's a rather arbitrary timeline, right? So there's nothing special about that date. It's not tied to any event that we know might happen. My, my crystal ball is not working very well, so I have no idea what the state of COVID-19 is going to look like in Columbus, Nebraska on that date. So I, you know, with that in mind, the idea of having a, a new sunset based on the current data and ongoing data is, is a really good strategy. And I'm glad that this body had shown interest in working to make that, that sunset better, that, you know, provision better. So what we talked about and what was recommend, what East Central had recommended to this body is, so looking at the Platte County cases, we'll talk about why Platte County here in just a little bit, but I'll just get through it. Platte County case count in, in the sense of 50 cases on a rolling seven-day average for 14 consecutive days, and that is per 100,000 people. Per 100,000 is, that's, that's just the, the normal sort of unit of measure that, that we typically look at. So we can compare apples to apples, right? So if we're looking at what is the, the case count per 100,000 at the state level or another community, you know, we, we deal with four, you know, counties in the, in the health district, so we're always comparing this, this data. You know, essentially 30 cases in one day is, or let's, let's use what, what the 50 cases per, per day, per 100,000 for the, for Platte County, that's, that happens to be 27. So when I, when I say 50 cases per day, that's really what we're talking. It's, it's an average of 27, right? 27 cases per day in Fullerton or in Albion, that would be a lot. That would be less than 50 cases here in, in Platte County. And so just, if we could just stay on that slide just for a second. So looking at that 14, 14 consecutive days ensures that there is real stability in that, in that number. So what you don't want, especially with an ordinance like this, is you don't want whiplash. You don't want the thing to turn on and then have it fall off and, and back and forth. The, the state DHM, you know, provisions which were based on, on total state hospitalizations, the, the percentage of, of COVID cases was done very similarly. So that had a, that had a seven-day window. This is a 14-day window where if there are 14 consecutive days below that 50 cases per 100,000 on a seven-day rolling average, that would, that would sunset. So that's, that's what that, that provision is.
No.
Yep. Okay. Next slide. So did, yeah, the, yep. No, you're fine. And then just the one with the graph, yep. So this is a little hard to see, but, so just wanted to put things in context. So the purple, although, okay, it shifted. It was right on the slides. Okay. So, so imagine that the purple line is at the 50 mark. This is, this will make the next couple of slides pretty awkward, but imagine that the, that the purple line was on 50. Okay. That's, that's where we were on, it would have been the 13th of last month. Okay. month. Okay. The, we hit 44.8, the, on the 12th, it was just above 50. Uh, and then if you, again, I think all of the, all of the figures had gotten, uh, slid over, uh, but over a two week period. Um, so on the 26th, uh, we were down to, um, uh, so it was just under 18. So, uh, you know, this would give an example of if we were to look at the last time we were above 50, which, so using the new criteria, the last time we were above 50, that would've been an application. So the, uh, the, uh, mask ordinance would've been on based on where we were at, at that time, but would've come off, uh, 14 days after, um, provided that, uh, and, and it was on this graph. You'll just have to, uh, trust me that, that all that, all that lined up. Um, so on the, on the 27th, uh, we've gone 14 consecutive days below, uh, that, that 50 cases, uh, per 100,000. Okay? Um, so in our, uh, in our current, uh, data, uh, as of Friday, um, we're, we're still sitting well below that. We're at, we're at, uh, just over 10, uh, cases per, per 100,000 to give some understanding. Uh, next slide, please. So I want to put the 50, and that's all. Okay. Uh, so I, I want to put the 50 cases per 100,000 in context. So this is the, um, th- this is the framework, uh, that, uh, the Harvard Global Health Institute had, uh, had put out, um, this, this summer. And you see that, uh, red is, uh, greater than 25 cases per 100,000. Uh, the recommended course of action at that point is, uh, stay at home orders. Uh, it's, it doesn't, it's not a suggestion at that point. They say that they are necessary. So those, those are the policy recommendations, uh, that this group, uh, which has been signed on by, by, by Johns Hopkins and, and others. Well, I can tell you that perspective on the ground, that we, we know that we can do 50 cases per, per 100,000. Well, I, I know what that looks like. Our hospitals know what that looks like. Um, it, it's, um, it's, uh, the, the, uh, 13th, right? So if we look back to, uh, you know, December 13th, um, that was what 50 cases per, per 100,000 looked like. From a, from a public health infrastructure standpoint, we can, we can manage that. We have the ability to, uh, to be able to do the contact tracing. We have the ability to, our, uh, you know, if, if you look at our, our, uh, you know, hospitalizations, they are a function of how many cases we have. The deaths that we have are a function of how many cases we have. Um, all of that tracks on pretty, pretty well. We know that at 50 cases per 100,000, we can mitigate, uh, and actually suppress the, uh, the, the outbreak of, of, of this virus. So, uh, but I just wanted to use this, uh, this framework just to give you an understanding of what the, the overall recommendations are and that if we're talking about in ordinance, um, we, we wanted to set that bar pretty high, right? Because there's a lot of room between 25 cases per 100,000 and 50 cases per, per 100,000. People can do the right thing, can choose to do the right thing between 25 and, and 50 cases before that becomes an, an ordinance. Uh, next slide. And I just, yeah, it all shifted down, but I, 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 I spent a, a little bit of time just showing where all that would pan out. Uh, and so this slide doesn't matter anymore because it, it did all shift in the, in the slide. Uh, but just realized that the red line was at 25 cases, the, the purple was on 50. I should've done a PDF. Uh, next slide, Jono, if you could. And this is a little hard to see, but this just gives, uh, just an overall understanding of, uh, and we're clear, the, sorry, the, uh, state of Nebraska is clear at the bottom, uh, but just giving some understanding of, um, you know, not, you know, all things being equal, looking at the case, per cases per 100,000, we can kind of see where we rank up with, with other states and where, uh, you know, uh, other outbreaks are. But you can see based on, uh, this chart, we, we're, we're basically, uh, doing better, much better, in fact, by a factor of five. Um, it, it's fine. It's, it's fine. We're, we're nearly through it. We are nearly through it.
Okay. It's not cooperating with me.
Yep. Uh, but we're, we're do, we're doing much better than we are, uh, at, at the state. But we, we can see at the state level where things are really improving, um, that, um, you know, we're, we're, uh, just over that, that 50 cases, right? And so, um, when would it be snapped back on? So we kind of talked about that a little bit. Um, so a single day of reaching that 50 cases, um, uh, per day on a rolling seven day average, uh, per 100,000. Um, so a couple of things on this. So this makes it a little bit more sensitive than looking at, uh, state hospitalizations, which is, um, you know, you know, the opportunity to, to make this better, right? So using local data, um, that allows us to, to actually do that. Um, using the seven day rolling average, uh, you know, helps prevent spikes, right? So you, you don't want to use daily, daily day, um, uh, you know, cases, uh, because you have a situation where, um, you know, data get queued up and sort of dumped, uh, often. Um, I'm going to say often, but it, but it does happen. And I just gave one, uh, you know, example here. This is just a math lesson, right? So I've got seven days. Um, so the, the numbers under each day, those are actual cases, right? And then the 49.9, that is cases per 100,000. So if we were cruising along between three and, or, you know, between one and five cases per, per day, uh, over a seven day period, and then let's say some cases had gotten queued up at the state level and had all dumped on a, on a single day for Platte County, you can see based on this, um, in, in context, it, it would not affect, uh, what, what that is. It wouldn't trigger, automatically trigger, um, a mask ordinance because of, you know, some, some sort of data glitch, right? So this helps protect against that. So that shows how, uh, you know, robust this particular, uh, process would, would look like. Um, and then with the extent, you know, this combined with the extension, or sorry, that, that sunset of 14 days, uh, you would have a minimum period of application for, for 14 days. So, uh, that would prevent that sort of whiplash back and forth where things are, are popping off and popping back on. You would, you would be able to plan at least for that, for that 14 days. Uh, and then the next slide, uh, just Y county data. Um, so I just took a screenshot. This is, uh, this is the raw data coming in, right? So, um, we, we use our own sort of, uh, you know, case data. So we'll, we'll use everything that, uh, we put in that gets, uh, you know, digested and, and sent back to us from, from the state in a, in a real time sort of fashion. You can see, uh, let's see, on this one, uh, my, my eyes aren't great. That's either seven or eight different spellings for, uh, the, the city of Columbus. Some of those are, are generated in a, in a, in a machine fashion, uh, uh, some, some sort of errant software there. So, uh, you know, most of the, uh, ways in which we collect these data, the, you know, people fill out their, their test Nebraska form. I don't know anyone that's ever completed a test Nebraska form, show hands. Um, people are able to type in, uh, where, where they're from. County is a dropdown list. So best thing that is about that form is there's a dropdown list. So, so that's a nice thing. They're, they're cleaner. Um, we have access to the, to the latest data, uh, in its, uh, in its cleanest form, which is county level. And then also, um, at the county level, uh, these data are, are aggregated and, uh, are, are publicly available through, uh, many different, uh, forms. So, you know, CDC website, like, you, you wouldn't even need these data from us. You could go to the, uh, you know, CDC data, uh, and I just did a quick math problem here. If we just scroll down on this figure, we don't even have to scroll out, Jono. If we just, just hit down, oop.
Sorry.
You're fine. You're okay. So the CDC website shows, uh, number of cases, um, over, uh, over a seven day period per, uh, per seven day, uh, period. So you can just take that number, which is 149, and divide that by seven and, and there you go. But that, that, it, that also promotes a lot of transparency. People can look at that, at, at that data and understand what, where we are at, at any given point in time. So, and that's longer than I wanted to talk. Any?
No, I, I think what we'll do Chuck, that, that's a good introduction to what's in front of us with this ordinance. Uh, we, we'd open for a, a motion to suspend the rules and then get into discussion among council members and public.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 21-03 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, uh, and read by number only. Ordinance number 21-03. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number 21-03 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 21-03. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if you could, I'd like to hear what Dr. Anderson, the city physician, has to say.
Okay. All right. I thought maybe what we'd do is kind of like public meetings if we wanted to have, instead of just, maybe have anyone opposed to what's in front of us and then anyone that has, you know, something to say in favor of some, maybe it would be good if Dr. Anderson wanted to come up before being a medical professional. Um, and, you know, there's not a lot of people here this evening, so maybe that's not even necessary to go pros and cons. We can just have a general discussion among ourselves and, and go forward. Um, so yeah, Dr. Anderson, would you, you've been asked if you'd come up and, and give us your thoughts?
Kip Anderson, 3683 Regency Place. Um, I think this makes a lot of sense. Um, the particular most important part of it is that it does allow for a reimplination of the ordinance if it so be necessary. I'm happy to report that since the last time I spoke with you, things have remained pretty calm here in town. We're actually have nobody in the ICU with COVID right now and vaccinations are moving along, not quite as quickly as I'd hoped they would, but between the hospital and the health department, I think roughly a thousand people in the county have been vaccinated. So that's doing pretty good. And, um, this, like I said, doesn't make sense. It makes a lot more sense than basing it on hospitalizations like the Papillion ordinance because not all of our hospitalized COVID patients are hospitalized here in Columbus and it's difficult to track. So I, I'm quite supportive of this measure and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Any questions for Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayor.
Yes.
Kip, just a minute.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't.
I, um, I have access to the Mayo Clinic, uh, maps that they send out that are very similar to, to the East Central District. And based on those, uh, as of the 2nd of January, with the numbers were, Platte County was experiencing a number of, this is Platte County, 50 cases per 100,000. And Columbus was experiencing 18 cases per 100,000. Now that's really a distinct difference. And I think it proves certainly beyond my shadow of doubt that the mask mandate worked.
I would, yeah.
And, and I, I'm a little concerned if we, that that number, that 50 number is so much higher than we are at this point in time, that it's, you know, it's not any strain to not get to 50. But it will, it, it could trend back in that direction, which is not a good public health thing. You want it to stay where it is or go even lower. How, how would you justify that 50 number? I know Chuck has, but I've got a little bit of heartburn with it myself. It seems to me like it's too high. And my, the people I talk with at the Mayo Clinic say it's too high. It should be around 25. But on the other hand, Chuck made a very good point that he, when he said that it wouldn't be going in and out, in and out, which would be a communications nightmare. And, and so if it went to one place and stayed there, whether it was over 50 or under 50, that would certainly make the whole situation work better. So that's, I, I can't disagree with that either. But what are your thoughts on that? Are we gonna, are we giving up everything we've gained?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the, the most important thing we need to remember is that we're not talking about not wearing masks. I mean, we're emphatically supporting everybody still wearing masks in public, still socially distancing, still avoiding large crowds, confined spaces. We're nowhere near out of this yet, but I mean, I think that as long, and people have pointed out that our community has done a pretty darn good job of doing that even prior to the ordinance. So I don't think that, that moving this direction is going to have any kind of detrimental impact. That's just my feeling.
Thank you very much.
So repeat yourself. You thought the people were doing an okay job prior to the mandate?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So why did we have a mandate?
Well, because it was, we were, at the time when this came up, it was, things were not looking good. I mean, this whole discussion that we had back in, um, in November would have been entertaining and academically challenging and, and robust debate back in August. But at the time when we made this decision, and, and I think it was the right decision we made, things were not trending in the right direction and doing anything and everything we can to help save lives was everybody's main goal at the time. And I think it, it's been helpful, but a lot of this has just been the progression of the disease and how things move around. And people have done a good job. I truly feel that way.
Any other questions for Dr. Anderson? Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Anyone else like to speak to this ordinance change? Yes, sir.
Taylor Anderson, 3653, 36th Avenue. Um, I'd like to start off by asking a question, if anyone knows. So I thought the, the graph that, uh, we saw for Platte County cases was, was quite interesting. Thanks for, thanks for showing that. Uh, what I was really trying to, to spot on there is what did the cases do when the mask ordinance went into effect? And I, I didn't really see a strong, you know, tip in the, the direction of the curve, but I also know that's all of Platte County, not just Columbus. Do, do we know what did the trend do, actually do from a numerical standpoint? When, when, on the 28th, when that went into effect? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I don't know if, if, if Mr. Sieper knows the answer to that, or if Chuck can address that, or?
So I, so I can, uh, so, so I can say that we, we haven't, yep.
So that's a, that's a great question. Uh, we have not looked at that, uh, very, very closely. And, and the reason for that is, uh, things have been trending in a, in a secular, uh, trend down. And that's, that's in our health district, that's statewide, uh, that's in the Midwest area. Um, I, at some point in time, when we, when we have some time, we're focused on, uh, you know, getting, uh, vac- vac- vaccines out at this point. But, um, when we go back and we look at that, uh, with, I, I would be interested to see, um, how, uh, those, those different municipalities that did enact, uh, you know, ordinances, and I'm sure UNMC will probably get to this long before we will, uh, but to look and see, uh, what, what the effect is, even if it's, uh, weeks out, right? So we would expect that any effect would be probably about 10 to 14 days after, uh, the, you know, implementation. I, I, I'm not going to sit, sit here and say that there's any compelling evidence to say that the mask mandate had, uh, a, a wide effect. I think that as Dr. Anderson had stated, you know, when, when we were at a point, uh, a, a near tipping point in, in, uh, you know, hospitalizations, um, the, the sentiment of doing everything that we could, uh, to, uh, to, uh, you know, affect death, uh, was, was something that we were all very, uh, you know, interested in. And so, but in terms of the, the effect, I, uh, you know, just eyeballing those data, I, I don't see a very compelling, uh, you know, effect with, with those data. So.
And then I did have one additional question. Um, what's, what's the position of the hospital, their board of directors on this? Do, do we know that as well?
The hospital has stated to me that they encourage the wearing of masks, hand washing, social distancing, everything that Dr. Anderson said.
Okay. This is, so just, you know, to be brief, I think this is a good idea, this ordinance, to put some facts and some numbers behind, you know, whether we're, we're having to wear masks or not. Um, I think I made my beliefs pretty clear when I was up here at the, on the 24th, that I, I don't think we needed a mask mandate and I, I still don't think we do. I think the numbers we're seeing say that we, we didn't need this all along. But hey, if this is a step in the right direction, giving us our freedoms back, it's using facts, it's using common sense, it's using n- numbers to get us there. Uh, one final question. If I understood it right, when I read through the full ordinance, the sunset provision still stays on the If I understood it right, when I read through the full ordinance, the sunset provision still stays on the twenty-third regardless of what this fifty, you know, cases per hundred thousand does. Do I understand that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thanks. So I would encourage all of you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Yes, sir.
Kyle Haddock, fifty-two twelve Forty-Second Street, Columbus. I have one question for Chad. Chuck, sorry, my bad. And also an answer to Taylor here. I was looking at the data that East Central Health provides pretty in-depth today. And as far as I can tell, the biggest drop in numbers was the week before the hearing or the council member, council meeting, sorry, on this. So as far as statistical data, it was on a big drop. And if she had, on that graph she had, that big spike in cases, we were well on the downturn before it was even instituted, I think was the twenty-ninth, if I remember right the date. And it had dropped many, many cases. And in fact, I think I can find that here. I'm on East Central Health, see here. Through November twenty-eighth, that new cases for this county was a hundred and sixty-two. And let's see here. New cases for date of November fourteenth, new cases was four hundred and fifty-five. So it already dropped like three hundred cases per week before we put in our mask mandate. And it continued to drop, so I, I mean, I can't say that the masks, you know, hindered it, helped it or not. But I'm just pointing out that that huge spike was before the mask mandate and dropped before the mask mandate. And I have, there's a lot of graphs out there showing mask mandates. I have one here. I mean, you can't hardly see it there. This is Omaha's mask mandate, put in, I think it's August eleventh. Went for three months, up, down, up, down. And right around first of October, it just spiked and they had a mask mandate in place at that time. And then my question for Chuck is how do you come up with that number of fifty per one hundred thousand?
Sure, I can speak to that.
So I just want to pull in a couple of things. So as Dr. Anderson had said, there isn't, we are absolutely in support of mask wearing whether or not there is a mask ordinance in place or not. And to Councilman Lower's point, you know, is fifty too high, right? There, it gave me some heartburn, you know, also to recommend that number. And I can imagine some colleagues of mine probably have some heartburn as we look at that number. We're talking about a mask ordinance. We're not talking about whether or not people should be wearing masks. And I, that recommendation doesn't come lightly. Again, I had shared the framework which had suggested that lockdown, you know, orders actually occur at twenty-five cases. All I can say is, given the weight of what this body must, you know, consider in terms of with this mask mandate, fifty cases per hundred thousand, it does allow for that space, right? There's that point at which public health experts have said twenty-five is too much. We need to do, we need to take immediate action now to curb things at twenty-five. It gives a lot of opportunities for things to occur other than a mask mandate between twenty-five and fifty. And because of that space and because of, you know, the fact that I think we all, you know, agree that, I think that, as Dr. Anderson had mentioned, you know, I think folks had done a pretty good job. It wasn't, I could say that I've seen a lot more mask, you know, compliance, but there wasn't, you know, complete lack of mask wearing prior to the mask mandate, right? What, the one thing I do want to talk to though is, at the point at which the mask mandate had gone into place, cases were free-falling at that point. You couldn't see it while you were in it, but looking back, we can see cases had, were actually coming down. It didn't feel that way. You know, if you, if we looked at our current hospitalizations at the time, they were increasing. Our case fatalities per week were also rising. So all of that in play certainly makes it difficult to understand what the effects were of the mask mandate. And talking about it from cases in and of themselves may not be the best way to actually do it. Doing everything that we could to turn the tide on hospitalizations and case fatalities is the way to, you know, think about that. But that space between twenty-five and fifty, that provides a lot of opportunities for folks to do the right thing without a mask mandate. And that was what we were considering when we were making that recommendation to this body.
That fifty number is sort of a national number?
Uh, is that...
Nationwide?
Sorry, so the number is based on the Platt County cases, yep.
But isn't that, didn't it originate like the government established a, you know, that criteria, like fifty per hundred thousand people?
Well, so the criteria is based on twenty-five cases per one hundred thousand. It was just, you know, that, so that framework that I had shared previously, it would recommend a mask mandate at ten cases per hundred thousand. And it would be looking at lockdown orders at twenty-five cases. So that's, so again, giving enough space to, and we're not as populated as, you know, New York City. We're not Boston, right? We're not Omaha. I, you know, there was a lot of the feedback that we had taken from folks as well. You know, we were, and this is maybe a slight tangent, but I think it's important for this conversation. We were using risk dials. We've actually sunsetted the risk dials in our sort of weekly report where we talked about what this will look like. This is gonna be a risk profile. It would include some of these, you know, statistics that better sort of explain where we are in terms of risk. So this is part of an overall framework to help educate folks and to help, you know, people understand what is our current risk, not on an arbitrary one to four scale dial, but this is a number you need to pay attention to. And here's the actual number and here's what you need to pay attention to in that way, but, so.
Anyone else like to speak from the audience? Any council members have any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
So just for clarification then, what is the actual number of cases within our city limits where the mask mandate has been placed? What is the actual number of cases that we need to say is the cutoff? Where once we get to this, as long as we're below this number, that we don't have to worry about the mask mandate? What is the number? Is it twenty-seven? Is it fifty? What is, what is, all I want is just the number. No explanation, just the number.
So based on the criteria for Platt County, it is twenty-seven cases.
So if we go above twenty-seven, we need to have our masks?
On a seven, on a seven-day rolling average.
On an average of seven days, gotcha.
Over, and there has to be fourteen consecutive days of being below twenty-seven. So fourteen consecutive days of being below twenty-seven cases per day on a seven-day rolling average.
On a seven-day average, okay. And so if we are going, if we get above twenty-seven, then how is this gonna be communicated to the public? Because we'll have, if we say less than twenty-seven and all the numbers are lower than that and people are becoming much more relaxed about wearing their masks, all of a sudden the number goes up. How do we communicate to people right away? The numbers are back up, the mask mandate's back in effect. So maybe that's a mayor question.
That sounds like a mayor question.
How is that gonna be communicated to the public?
Well, it would be communicated the same way we communicate any official information. We would have press releases, we would have news releases, we would get information out to the public on all the public channels that we have access to with anything that we do. Any changes in our ordinances or laws are posted in online depending on what, you know, what the person's able to access.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And that would, you know, and I mean, that's a very valid question and a concern. I mean, you know, I know one of the things that is a concern is we don't want the flip-flop back and forth. I mean, 'cause it is, I mean, that's gonna add confusion. And I think, you know, what I believe Mr. Shepers has tried to do is express a process that has some length to it so that there's some consistency, either consistency under or even some consistency over, so that this thing does not go like this and like that. And then, you know, and obviously by not taking out any original sunsets, what we're talking about is something that we want in place to get us to February twenty-third. You know, and I do believe that was an arbitrary date. I mean, our friends in Kearney and a few other communities had used that. I believe in visiting with some people, it was the fact that that kind of got through what they expected to be the holiday surges, maybe the beginning of what flu seasons would have been. So it's arbitrary, but there was kind of a reason to get toward the end of February. And so that is, I mean, again, I'm making a few assumptions here, but that's part of the process to try to give it some stability, keep some protection in line if things would spike and go haywire. And, you know, if we stay where we are and things continue and we get good compliance with people continuing to wear their mask and work with social distancing and the hand washing and what have you, you know, this may be a mute point, very well could be a mute point.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. I had another question, 'cause I've talked to some business owners who have been in opposition to the mask mandate. So on their behalf, I guess I'm kind of asking this question. If we pass this ordinance tonight and our numbers are under twenty-seven, can business owners who have no opposition to the masks, they can take their signs out of their windows then? And I'm presuming...
If the ordinance passes, if the change in, if this ordinance passes this evening, the legal enactment of a new ordinance is three calendar days after its passage? Or is there something different that can be done with that, Neil? Because the basic answer to your question is yes, they can. I just want to make sure we're not encouraging somebody to do something too soon.
The original ordinance was done this emergency, so it was within three days. So I think it's arguable that within three days, this could take effect.
And then I guess the last question then is, if we are under our twenty-seven days, the mask mandate is, you know, right now not in place, then I'm presuming then the police department isn't gonna have to worry about phone calls from people to report not wearing masks unless it's a business that says, like for example, if I may use Menards, they have always had a mask mandate in place. That's their right as a business to say they're gonna require their customers.
Yeah.
So if a business has decided, we're still gonna require our customers and our employees to wear a mask, they would be the ones that would have the right to call a police officer if citizens aren't complying with what they've asked for their business. Am I correct with that?
Yes, you are correct. That's always been the situation even before, as you mentioned, Menards or other businesses that have asked customers to wear a mask. If they really want to enforce it and somebody doesn't want to, it would be up to that business owner to contact the police and then you would have, you know, the police interaction at that point.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any questions from Councilman Roth at home?
Prant. Prant?
Tell him to wake up now, come on, just 'cause he's not here.
Do you have any questions, Prant?
He has no questions. Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Any other questions from the audience? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number twenty-one oh three. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. All right, we move on to ordinance number twenty-one oh four.
Item fifteen D, ordinance number twenty-one oh four, amending multiple sections of chapter thirty-three of Title III of the Columbus City Code to update and make organizational changes for the fire department. No motion is necessary. This is a first reading. And we did have a public, a committee meeting or a committee, the whole presentation on this. And some changes went back to volunteers and a couple of words were changed. So we got the feedback that you all requested after that meeting.
Any questions in regard to this, these changes? Because as Tara said, there were some questions when first presented. I think we've gotten clarification for those questions and if everybody's comfortable with it. All right.
All right, ordinance is on their second reading. Item...
Did we make a motion?
We don't need to.
We don't need to, I'm sorry, you're right.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two zero dash three two, adopting the Unified Land Development ordinance. No motion is necessary. This is a second reading. You want to ask for any public comments?
Any public comments in regard to the land development ordinance on its second reading? All right, we'll move on to ordinances on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two zero dash two seven, amending section ninety-one point oh one of chapter ninety-one of Title IX of Columbus City Code, adopting the limited applications of the two thousand eighteen International Fire Code.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number two zero dash two seven to be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash two seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seventeen B, ordinance number two zero dash two eight, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of Title XV of the Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen Uniform Plumbing Code.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two zero dash two eight. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash two eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seventeen C, ordinance number two zero dash two nine, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of Title XV of Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen International Residential Code.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number twenty dash twenty-nine be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash two nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seventeen D, ordinance number two zero dash three zero, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of Title XV of the Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen International Building Code.
I move for the adoption of number, ordinance number twenty dash three zero.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash three zero. Before I ask for a vote, I would just like to say once again, and I did this in the very first reading, there were nobody in the audience to address any of these codes. These are codes that affect building, commercial, residential. These are codes that we've updated to be in compliance with state code. Is that now right, Dan? So my point being, these are things that have changed and nobody's been here to challenge them. I mean, some of it we couldn't challenge, they're state laws, but there's been no input. So you make the assumption when nobody's here that, okay, that's good, it's okay. And that's, and I know there will be something that comes up because some of these things will, you know, have small things in it that maybe bother somebody. They're gonna have to have it discussed. But the point is, there is time for public input, not after it's been passed, but while it's being discussed. Oh, we have a motion and a second to pass to ordinance number two zero dash three zero. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to consideration of bills and payroll on file, which was included in the consent agenda. That being said, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. Thank everybody for coming this evening.
Okay, thank you, Prant.